The Tiverton Town Council meeting. I would like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clark?
Counselor Gerlach?
Present.
Counselor Ruda?
Present.
Counselor Shabert?
Present.
Counselor DiMediris?
Present.
Counselor Rodrick?
Present.
Counselor Lambert?
Present.
Counselor Pelletier is on his way.
Can you lower the volume? This evening, we have an average public hearing at the Town Council's sitting as supportive licensing. Before we begin, I'm going to ask the audience's indulgence that once we begin the public hearing, if you will come up on either side and we'll motion you to go to the podium here, please state your name and address. I'm going to ask the audience, not as many as I expected here this evening, please no offers. If you have something to say, please come forward through the mic. I'm going to limit everyone to about three minutes. In addition, if you're only going to reiterate something that's already been said, please, you know, just for the essence of time, you know, don't just keep repeating the same thing over and over. So this evening, we'll begin with the Tiverton Rod and Gun Club, 1529 Fish Road, Platte 311, Lot 172. Request approval of an indoor shooting range license, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Public hearing is now.
Good evening, Mr. President. I'm visiting the council. I am Peter Regan with the law firm of Sayar Regan. And there, here representing the Tiverton Rod and Gun Club. As you know, the club is a nonprofit organization that's been operating in Tiverton since 1933, and the majority of its members are Tiverton residents and families. This is an application to license the existing indoor range facility at 1529 Fish Road. And this application essentially seeks permission simply to continue the current operation of that indoor facility. Now, as you know, the indoor range at the Rod and Gun Club over the past year was renovated, really to what I would describe as a state-of-the-art indoor facility with top-of-the-line safety, soundproofing, environmental, and ventilation equipment. We have provided, along with the application, copies of all the materials that were required under the new ordinance. That includes the indoor range management plan, the range's operating procedures, a lead management plan, a site plan of the facility. In addition, it's my understanding that background checks have been completed satisfactorily on all 14 of the club's officers, and that Chief Blakely inspected the indoor range last week. Had the opportunity to take a look at a copy of his report and would note that it states that all required safety and security measures are in place, including shot containment and soundproofing. And the report concludes that there's nothing that was found in the inspection that would disqualify the applicant from being issued a license under the new ordinance. In terms of the range, the location of this facility, I think it's important to note that this indoor range is located more than 500 feet from any residential dwelling. In fact, the club actually owns the residential lots within 500 feet of this facility as part of a program that the club undertook to create and maintain a buffer between the range and the residential neighborhood. I do have John Means here tonight, who's available to answer any questions that the council might have. But before that, just one additional point I wanted to mention, and I have discussed and corresponded with the solicitor on this issue. There are, you know, despite everyone's best efforts, there are still some revisions that need to be made to this ordinance in order for it to...
I'm just pointing out, just so you're aware, that there are some...
It still technically applies to outdoor ranges, and I know that's not the council's intent on the way it's currently drafted, under the definitions. I've given the details to the solicitor. Hopefully, he can share those with you. So at this point, as I said, Mr. Means is available to answer any specific questions you have. I believe that the materials that him provided show that this club meets and exceeds all of the standards set forth in the ordinance, in addition to its impeccable 80-year safety record. So I can have Mr. Means come up if the council has any specific questions.
Mr. Means? Mike?
Question? Yes. Guide in insurance? Yes. Reiterate what insurance the amount of?
Sure. We do have a copy of that for you, but it's $1 million, $2 million aggregate. It was not part of the checklist of the package, so we did bring it tonight. We'd be happy to provide it.
Anything from the council?
Mr. President, I have just a couple of questions. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding just some of the content here. I do appreciate the thoroughness of the application and the management plan and all of the documentation. I thought it was well put together. I have two specific questions. Can you clarify, anyone who is using your indoor range is either a current member or a guest of a member of the club?
Correct.
And to be a member of the club, you must be a licensed... You must be licensed to carry or own a firearm?
No. That's not how clubs work. You have to have a background check to enter our club. Licensed to carry conceals a whole different issue within the state. Our screening process is such that applicants have to have a background check. Our range is operated by a security system which includes card key access. Before we turn on the card key, the members are trained in the standard operating procedures which you have been provided, which essentially makes them range safety officers.
Okay.
They have to sign up on a piece of paper that says they understand and will adhere to all the rules.
But everyone has gone through... If you're not a guest, assuming you're not a guest, everyone has gone through...
Correct.
Background check per...
Yes.
Okay. My second question is, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this, that the... What's allowed on your range is any handgun? And then as far as rifles, it's up to a .22 caliber? Did I read that correctly?
Our operating procedures state that pistol caliber is allowed. So if you have a rifle that shoots a pistol caliber, for instance, a .22 rifle, as you stated, that is allowed.
Okay.
It's all based on what the range equipment is rated for.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else from the council? Anyone from the public? Anyone from the public? Third and final time, anyone from the public? Seeing none, I will open it up to the council.
I'm sorry, Ed. I can't hear you.
He's opening up to the council.
Except for the council. Any questions, discussion that we would like to have at this time? I will open it up in saying that your packet is well-prepared. It gives us a lot of information. I'm not sure if everyone can hear us. I'm not sure we're having problems. And again, I commend the Rod and Gun Club for being so diligent in getting all the information and putting everything together. I, at this time, will just ask Chief Blakely if he will just come up and give us his... Even though we have it, the public does not, just to give us an overview of his findings.
Chief Blakely? Yes, sir. I did inspect the premises on September 25th. I found... Basically, I adhered to the definitions within the ordinance and checked all the sightlines, the acoustics, and ballistic glass, et cetera. Found everything in place. Actually, it was quite impressive.
Any questions from the council?
Let's have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Chief, when you did your report, was there anything that laid out what to possibly follow for inspection-wise, like...
I'm sorry. We're getting a lot of feedback here. I can't even hear you.
Is this better? Was there any guideline to possibly follow to do the inspection? I'm not sure if this is something that you guys have done in the past or have any...
No. I've been coming up on 40 years using ranges, unfortunately. It's been a long time. But, no, there were no engineering guidelines, but I used basically as the safety approach, definitions within the ordinance, and inspecting the facility itself, inside, outside, ventilation system, and again, any safety procedures that are head in place.
And then that's the last question. And we've... This has been discussed before with the background checks, because this has been an issue, but this has been trying to hire people for the town. And you had to do this, was it 14?
Yes, there were 14. There were four officers and nine board members. And the employment background check is completely different than a criminal background check. It's just apples and oranges. This is... Basically, it's a check for criminal background checks, any violations of that nature. Employment is... Far exceeds this. We go back into... Actually, for police, we actually go into the gambling, mental health, psychiatric, so completely different.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Anything else from the council? Attain a motion regarding the request for approval of an indoor shooting range license, subject to meeting all legal requirements?
I'd like to... I'd like to make a motion to grant the Tiverton Rod and Gun Club, 1529 Fish Road, Platte 311, Lot 172, an indoor shooting range license.
We have a motion, a second, made by Mr. Pelletier. All those in favor will...
Before you vote...
Yes, Mr.? Mr. Tice?
Trying to get the right distance here. The license is set to run like all the licenses from December 1st to November 30th. It seems somewhat unwieldy... This is the first time we're doing it. It seems somewhat unwieldy to have this now and have them back before us next month for renewal. The timeframes are such in the ordinance, they applied in less time than they had to. They had 90 days in which to apply, and then it had to be granted within 60 days from the application, which would take us out close to the end of November anyway. My suggestion would be that this initial license be granted through November 30th, 2015, subject to them paying a yearly fee plus a prorata fee for the two out of 12 months left in this year for the application fee, so that we don't have to have that duplication of effort in the next two months.
I'd like to amend my motion to...
I'm just going to ask Mr. Means. Yes? Thank you.
It's about $10.
I amend the motion to... From September 29th to 2014 to November 30th, 2015.
Second. We have again a motion by Mr. DiMediris, second by Mr. Pelletier. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, roll call, please, starting with Mr. Gerlach.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thanks very much.
Secana River Outfitters, Zero Main Street, corner of Main and Haskins Road, Platte 117, Lot 224, request approval of indoor shooting range license, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Radio LeBeau, 22 Last Street, owner of Secana River.
What can I do for you?
Can you speak into the mic, please?
Yes, I can.
Yeah, we're having sound issues tonight. Mr. LeBeau, obviously, we have your application. Same rules and regulations apply. Everything seems to be in order. Again, we just have... If you want to give us a general overview, I see a markup of something here in front of me. If you want to discuss that.
Okay. What I have is in front of you is a quarter-scale model of what the new range will be. The only thing missing out of my packet, obviously, is the insurance, because until I open, the insurance won't be available. But if you want me to step up there, I can point out a few things to you guys that can lean over and see how, you know, the safety of the new range and how it's going to be instructed.
It's not us. It's the audience.
If you can just talk at the podium, stand it up at the podium and just talk into the mic. That's for the TV cameras and the rest of the audience.
Page Channel 12, vote Radio, November 4. What we have is a scale model of Secana River Outfitters' new facility with the indoor range. Anybody who's close enough to see, these two walls right here are solid concrete walls, 12. They're 12 feet high, 90 feet long, and this is where the baffles will be hanging off the back of this. And I put a state-of-the-art... Actually, I put a snail trap system that actually recycles the lead immediately. I have Casey's out of... Actually, it's Action Target who's handling the whole job, but Casey's is putting in the lead abatement and the whole system, pretty much the same as the Rod and Gun Club did, all modern, up-to-date. The building on the outside, the outside shell, was an added $80,000 expense that I took to make... To ensure that there's no sound on the outside of the building. All I was really required to do was the walls. I lined the whole building with the metal building, the whole range with the metal building, to make sure there's no sound will leave this building. Basically, that's it. The model will be at Secana River Outfitters from today forward. If anybody wants to come over, take a look, ask any questions about construction, who's going to do it, it'll be at the shop.
Okay. All right. Since this is a public hearing, again, I will ask anyone from the public. Yeah, for the moment. Okay. Anyone from the public?
My name is Nan Hirow, and I live at 51 Bay Ridge Drive in Middletown, Rhode Island. I'm a member of the Rhode Island Chapter of Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense and a board member of the Rhode Island Coalition Against Gun Violence. But I'm here to speak to you from the perspective of a grandmother of four grandchildren, ages five to eight years old. I am deeply concerned about the safety issues inherent in the building of a gun range in a populated area. Even with the strongest precautions taken, guns are still dangerous weapons. I am not here to argue the right for people to bear arms, only the right of citizens to be protected by their municipal leaders. If the gun range is to be built anywhere, the question of how to ensure the safety of those living, working, or playing nearby is one of which must be given the greatest consideration. I fully support the council... The Tiverton Town Council's efforts to develop regulations for this purpose. Licensing of such facilities can help to keep accidents to a minimum by requiring background checks on staff and management of the range, training for all staff, age limits on participants, and types... And limits on the types of firearms which can be used by untrained or young shooters. In fact, the National Association of Shooter... Of Shooting Ranges indicates that no one under the age of eight should ever participate in a shooting range. I don't think we want to see a repeat in Tiverton of the tragedy in Phoenix, Arizona, on August 28th of this year, at the last stop range where a nine-year-old girl was allowed to shoot an Uzi, resulting in the accidental death of her instructor. If this can happen with a highly-trained instructor, it can happen in any setting. I mentioned my grandchildren in the opening of my statement because they play at a soccer complex... A soccer complex, excuse me, at a... They play soccer at a complex of fields on Wyatt Road in Middletown, which is abutted by an outdoor shooting range. I can hear gunshots while the kids are playing. I called our police chief to ask how this range is regulated. I did not see any ordinances in Middletown's codes to show that such a facility was regulated. So you can imagine my interest in supporting Tiverton in their efforts to do this and to be able to point to the town, Tiverton, as a model for Middletown, to guide us in improving the safety for my grandchildren and all the people using both the gun range and the soccer fields. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Can you hear me? Because I saw Counselor Pelletier going like this, so I don't know if the sounds have been fixed. Okay. My name is Maureen Morrow. I live in... I live on Peaceful Way in Tiverton. And I did get up and speak at the last hearing. I wasn't planning to speak tonight, but something that the Rod and Gun Club testimony contained really spoke to me, and I think it does offer an opportunity for this council to consider a special... The geography of this current proposal. So the Rod and Gun Club, from what I understand, actually purchased land around the Rod and Gun Club so that there would be a buffer zone for residential neighborhoods, which is very wise. One of the things that I have learned is that the state of Rhode Island does have law which allows local governments to pass ordinances to protect the public safety, and this is specific for firearms. It also has a section that says, it's Section 114750, "It prohibits the discharge of firearms, BB guns, and other contraptions capable of discharging bullets, shot, or missiles within the compact part of any city or town, except on land owned by or occupied by the firearm user." So there is an opportunity, I think, here for the Town Council to protect the citizens of Tiverton in a compact part of town where there's a bus stop, there are residential neighborhoods, not just the street where this gentleman wants to put his shooting range, but other neighborhoods across Main Road. This is your opportunity. I am not saying that he should not be licensed, but I don't think he should be licensed where he proposes to put his gun range. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Second call, anyone from the public? Third and final call, anyone from the public? Seeing none, I'll open it up to the council.
I actually have several questions for Mr. LeBeau, if possible. I'll just go in no particular order, but I probably have like six or seven.
Oh, that's okay.
So just, can you confirm for me, this is kind of just a technicality, but...
Mr. Gerlach? Again, I'm sorry, but we can't hear you.
I will try better. Can you just confirm on the name of the person or organization filing for the license? So here we have two different business entities listed here, and I'm confused on who is what and what is who. So we have Secana River Outfitters LLC and then R&amp;D Acquisition LLC.
Okay. R&amp;D Acquisition is the actual LLC. That's the main company. I own some other companies. Secana River Outfitters is just an LLC of R&amp;D Acquisitions. Who is my... Who is the... That's my corporation.
Okay.
So it's just a common... It's just a way businesses are commonly done, just to keep them separate from each other.
Okay. Great. All right. Can you elaborate a little bit on the proposed business model for the shooting range? Help me understand the clients that you'll be bringing in?
Yep. Okay. What I'm going to do is, we're going to mostly cater to people who don't want to be part of a gun club. Basically, we're going to have classes for beginner shooters, all the way up to advanced shooters. And we have a classroom set up. We have... See, our range is going to have RSOs, range safety officers, in the range at all times. There'll never be a shooter in there without an RSO in there. We're not going to have a pass card system. Every four shooters, there'll be one RSO. If there's five, there'll be two RSOs, up to eight. We have eight lanes. So we're not... And we're going to operate a 12-hour day, not a pass card, again, not 24 hours. And there's one access into the range, one access out. And as you see, our test that was up there and the qualification for the guys to come in and shoot, they have to, at bare minimum, they have to have their Rhode Island blue card, which is pistol safety. And then they have to go through our course, which is a half an hour course for everybody that comes in and shoots. Then we'll issue them a card, picture ID, and we'll know they had already taken the course. And that's going to satisfy me to let these people in and my people that work there to make sure it's absolutely safe.
Sure. And so will people be able to come in off the street and rent a gun and go into the range?
They will. I will have rentals, but again, they'll have to have all the other safety requirements first. If you came into my shop and you wanted to shoot a gun, you never shot a gun, you don't have a blue card, absolutely not. You have to have all the criteria to go in and shoot.
And forgive me, what's the process for obtaining a blue card?
You have to take a 50-question test that's given by the Rhode Island Department of, I guess it's the DEM that takes care of it. And it's a 50-question, basic pistol. And then from that point, once they get that, then they can come in and take our half-hour range rule, safety. They'll sign off that they read all the safety rules. And again, there'll be nobody in there unattended.
Okay. And as far as guests are concerned, is there a... Is there sort of a guest policy here?
The same policy for everybody.
Okay. And... Okay. So that's good. I just have a couple more. Can you clarify what types of guns will be allowed on the range?
Yep. Well, my range is... It's being built to hold... To withstand 50 BMG, which is a military 50-caliber rifle. It's the strongest indoor design that's built. And I'm going to allow up to probably 223...
I'm sorry.
A 223 round, rifle round, which is just a souped-up .22. But it can withstand any rifle. That can be, you know, any rifle that a person can purchase. It'll hold it, but I'm not going to allow... What's going to be allowed is, when I stand outside, and if you can hear it, it's not allowed.
Okay.
So that's... But up to this point, I know 762s, which is an AK round. I hate to call it that, but it's a 762 round. That's as large as I'm going to allow. And you won't be able to hear that outside.
Okay. My final question for the moment is, can you elaborate on what you've done in the past to engage the neighbors and the neighborhood around your proposed location? I know when this all started some months ago, and you were in front of the council, there were some folks in the neighborhood that expressed concern that they had not met you, you had not met them. So I'm wondering, since that time, what more has been done, if anything, to engage the neighbors and the neighborhood here?
The immediate neighbors. All the immediate neighbors I've spoken to, pretty much, I've offered them the opportunity to come to my shop, explain everything to them, show them the range design. Action Target is probably the best in the world at their ranges, but I've never gotten any contact back from anybody. But I've talked to most of the neighbors. They come over and talk. I went to the bus stop in the morning. I spoke to all the mothers that were there in the morning. I told them what was going on, how safe it's going to be. They seemed to... Their biggest concern was what kind of building were they going to look at? They thought it was going to run the other way. So... But I spoke to all them. I let them know, we're not open until 9:00. The buses are gone. And by the time the kids get off the bus, 3:00, if there's an issue... And by the time the kids get off the bus, 3 o'clock, if there's an issue there, there won't be, because Rhode Island law doesn't let you run around with a flinging gun, it looked like a little suitcase. So them are the people I've spoke to so far.
Okay. That's it for now.
Anyone else from the council?
Yeah, I've got a couple of sort of logistical questions. I'm just, oh, boy. I'm looking, I'm referring to the site plan. It's Plan Number C02, which lays out the building in, on the site. And the major question or concern I have is, there seem to be 12 parking spaces.
Yep.
You've got an eight-lane range, and if you have it full, you're going to have four more range safety officers, plus the staff for the retail space. What is the overflow capacity, or is there room for additional parking on the site? Is this going to be street parking where people are going to be walking? I think that's the concern that everybody would have, but-
Okay. Well, I sat with the Tiverton Planning Board. I had 26 parking spots. They didn't want 26 parking spots. There was no need for it. So at my expense, once again, that's when they moved the building back. There is 12 additional lawn park parking spots. They just didn't want a big blacktop in that neighborhood.
Yeah.
So I did everything that they asked me to do. I reduced it to eight paved, and then there's, or 12 paved, and then it's going to be 12 or 14, I forget the exact number, 12 or 14 grass parking spots.
Okay.
There'll be no off-street parking at all. Anybody who comes into my shop has to park in the lot.
Right. That's what I assumed. And that would be just sort of, if you were to draw an imaginary line, presumably behind those spaces, behind that lot is where the grassed area is going to be where you-
Yeah, correct. If you're looking on there, right where, you drive in, you could park on, say you're going to go to your left, there'll also be just as many to the right.
To the right.
Just grass, because they prefer it a lawn over there.
Where are you in the process with the planning board at this point?
Tuesday, a week from tomorrow, should be my final planning board meeting. I should be having permit by that Friday, I would imagine. I did everything. It's been there a few times and changed my building, changed where it sits. We changed the roof line, we changed everything. I did everything they wanted to do for the look that they wanted. If you take a look at the building, you'd see I had a flat roof on it. They wanted a three pitch, we did that. We reduced the parking, the paved parking, we took care of all of that, the swale, the glass that they wanted, the windows that they wanted. They wanted a certain look. I gave them everything that they wanted.
So you're just assuming it's your last meeting with them, but-
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah.
They might be making more changes.
It is Tiverton. It's, it could go on for a while. But I'm assuming that I-
Because obviously, we can't have the police chief do a safety-
No.
-check of your building, because this is a new building.
In the documents that I gave you from Action Target, they take 100% liability for their range. It's called a black-sky range. A bullet can never leave that range. It can't leave.
But that's not what the police chief is checking. He's making sure that doors are locked and-
Yeah. And the chief was at the meeting, and he, we went over everything that he wanted. And everything at the first, the first planning board meeting, he let me know where he wants windows, doors, how they to be locked, no full glass, everything they asked for from the police perspective and the fire perspective have all been there.
But we would need a final inspection of the building.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, I don't expect you to say, tonight, you're licensed, because you can't license something that's not there. I expect, I would like to say, you meet all the requirements with the police, the chief, everything Tiverton had to do, you'll be licensed. Because my next step that I do is going to be very costly, because the inside walls have to be built before the outside wall. And I'll meet, I, probably 50% more safety than was required in the ordinance, 50 to 100% more. If you read over all the range, it's, it'll be safe.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. LeBeau, I just had a couple of questions, and they're really just a follow-up to what the issues that Mrs. DiMateris has raised. One concern I have is that I have in front of me an application for a license, but as you point out, there's no business there. But it's more than simply not having the business in operation. There's none of the documents, and I think you'd concede that, at least at this point, we have nothing finalized as far as any permitting or final approval from the planning board. You just made the comment that, and I hope I'm getting this right, you wouldn't be surprised if we didn't actually grant the license tonight. Can you understand at least my concern in granting a license to something that I can't even imagine at this point and have no idea what it would look like? And in a way, I really, I'm sure you're, you're going to promptly move with all of this, but after the grant of the license, there's nothing that really would prevent you from saying, "Out of heck with it, and I'm not going to go ahead with it." And we've granted a license.
Well, I have a ton of money invested, so I'm not backing up.
I guess one issue I would have had, and I'm not trying to second-guess you on this, but would it have, looking back, would it have made more sense and maybe, maybe helped your cause if we had completed the permitting process and permitted the complete and final review by the planning board before you come for the license?
I mean, that probably would have made sense, but they tried to kill two birds with one rock here.
Oh, okay. Well, that's, I understand.
But the other thing is, my planning board should be done on Tuesday. This has been, I've been pushed off now for 90 days with this. This should be up and done right now. This last planning board meeting, what I would really like tonight is to say, you're going to meet all, everything that's in the license, I'll meet. Meet or beat. Beat most of them. And I just need to know that when I start this project in a week, that I'm not going to be building $100,000 worth of concrete walls for nothing.
No, I'm not asking you to build it. Now, that wasn't the que-
No, I know, but I'm-
But I'd at least like to get past the permitting and the planning process. I take it, then, you would have no problem and perhaps would understand why this town council might consider, and I don't know where we're going, but might consider simply continuing this until the permitting and the planning board have completed their work, and perhaps attached to that even a condition or a request that you provide us with status reports, let's say every two months, so that we know that there's some progress being made here.
This whole project's not going to take two months. Once ground is broken, once ground, this is a prefab building.
Well, all I would need is some, I'd like to have some assurance that this is proceeding.
And you know, I-
And if I vote, I'd like to be voting on something concrete that I can actually visualize and understand what the operating process would be.
Now, if it does, if you guys decide to extend me again here, are we going to have to do another public meeting, or am I just going to go in front of the town council? Is this the last public meeting that's going to have to be held?
God damn it.
No, but I mean, advertise.
Advertise hearing.
Am I just going to stand in front of the town council and get my license at that point?
No, because we're continuing it, right?
Mr. Tights?
Well, I think that what I'm, if I'm, what I'm hearing from Mr. Lambert would be that, yeah, that it would be a continuation of the public hearing. So it appears we don't need to have it here at the high school, given the number of people, but continue it to the next regularly scheduled meeting, which would take it past the planning board date. If you have your approval from the planning board at that point, that seems to be what people are looking for. If not, it can be continued again. So that way, the town doesn't have the expense of the newspaper advertisement each time. And if it doesn't have to be in the high school, it's fairly flexible on two-week intervals.
Right. It's just, my, my main concern is, once I'm through with the planning board, I plan on getting this foundation in immediately.
They can't.
Has the plans been reviewed by the building and fire?
Yep.
Well, because, I mean, that you'd be doing at your own risk. That's the problem. If you have the license, you're doing it at your own risk, if you're going to start digging the foundation.
Right. Well, that's why I would like approval tonight. It's been going on for a long time.
If I may, if I may. Mr. LeBeau, first of all, I have some questions first, and then I'll give you my thoughts. I'm not a gun person, so when you speak calibers and all that other stuff, you kind of lose me. All I need to, what's the biggest type of gun that the average person would understand would be allowed there?
An AR rifle.
I'm sorry?
An AR rifle.
Okay. Which is like a military gun?
A military gun, yep. About the smallest military gun.
Okay. No automatic?
No, not legal in Rhode Island. No automatic weapons.
Okay. Again, these are only my own thoughts. We are, as Mr. Lambert has said, we're looking at nothing, because we don't have a building, we have no approved plans, our chief cannot inspect a building that doesn't exist, he cannot do background checks on employees.
Well, the only background check that's going to be needed here is on me. And I'm law enforcement, I get the worst one that anybody could ever possibly imagine.
No, if you have other people, you're the only person-
I'm the only person responsible for anything that goes on in there. And that's what, that's what the ordinance reads, for me to be for the responsible person and owner, I'm both. I'm the owner and the manager and, but my guys will pass, because the other two guys are law enforcement, too, that work in there. But anyway-
In your LLC, you have no officers?
Yeah, I do. And they're both, they're both, my son, he's the CO.
So wouldn't they be under the same background check for the LLC for the, as the business?
I don't know. I'm just going by what the ordinance said. According to the ordinance, it was just me that needed it.
Okay. Let me just ask Mr. Tights and the chief.
I think it would be, it would be Mr. LeBeau Senior, and I noticed that Craig LeBeau is listed as the range master, so it would be those two. If, and if they're the only officers or actually members, if it's an LLC, then-
Craig's not even a member of the LLC, he's just my kid.
Okay, but he's also listed as the range master.
Yeah, he is, but I mean, that's-
And who is?
Matt is on there as well, and they're both NRA instructors and-
Matthew Carvalho?
Yes.
Okay.
But I have no problem getting BCI's for them either, but I mean, Craig really, he doesn't need one. We'll get him whatever you need.
No, again, I mean, it would just make sense to me.
Me, too. It's only a piece of-
I'm sure all of the officers, all the officers of the Tiverton Rodden Gun Club didn't think they needed it either, but we just have to do it.
Well, I'm just saying what the ordinance said. It said just the owner and manager. That's what the ordinance read, so that's why I thought it was just me, but I'll get anybody who works there, if that's what you want.
But if you, are you going to be there at all hours of operation?
No.
Then who is manager when you're not there?
Matt or Craig.
So then he would have to be-
Okay, but that's not what the ordinance read. That's not the way I read the ordinance.
It's a little fuzzy. It says the designated operator of the facility, so-
And I have no problem, because I don't want any felons in there anyway, so.
All right. Again, and these are only my own thoughts.
Yep, and I have no problem.
And I understand that, you know, you haven't gone through the final process with the planning board, and I hate to issue a license on something that we don't know whether or not it's going to be approved or not. And then to continue this, again, I have an issue with that, saying, it's going on, it's going on, you know, we should make some sort of decision to give a direction of which way you should go and which way I believe maybe we shall, as a council, go. I think it's within our power to grant a license, but not issue it.
Correct. And that's what, that's all I'm looking for tonight.
So I'm saying that, and again, I will, you know, have the council discuss this and vote, but I would believe that if they are amenable to grant this license, that it not be issued until all permits are issued, until all inspections have been done, all background checks, all the requirements as the Rodden Gun Club has gone through, before it is actually issued.
And I agree with every, that's perfect.
So again, I will open it up again for the council on any thoughts they may have.
I just have a couple of sort of mechanical thoughts about that. It's that, it would seem that if there are any alterations to the materials we have now, that is material to the license. So at some point, it has to be reviewed, policies have to be, you know, you check the box, make sure it meets the criteria, because we don't, we don't have a complete application, because we don't, we, we have no building to inspect, we have no, and if these plans are not what's built, we're sort of, we're licensing something as it's, as these plans indicate, not necessarily as what gets built. So I'm wondering what the mechanism is for once the structure exists and-
Well, I think that's why if he comes back to the council on a periodic basis, once the permits are given and so forth, with, if there are changes to the plan, because we're only granted not issuing it, and the issuance would be subject to meeting all the requirements.
Yeah. I'm just wondering if that's another, if that's an administrative review, or if it's a review in front of the council to make sure all of these, to sort of ratify and issue that license. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
If the building, if Thursday night, I mean, Tuesday night, the building changes again, or something on the site changes, it's now inconsistent with the plans that we've just approved. So I just want to make sure we're, we're not issuing a license.
But again, I think we're putting a caveat, saying that we're only granting the license. We will only issue it once we have finals on everything. And Mr. Tights can check and see if we have the ability. I believe we have the ability to grant it and then not issue it until it meets all our requirements.
That's correct. But I do think you just should specify whether you want this to be an administrative review by the clerk before the issuance of the license, or if the things that you're looking for are substantive enough that you want it to come back to the council.
My personal opinion is that it comes back to the council.
It's up to you. I just think you should specify.
Again, this is only a discussion right now. We can vote on the finals, but I'm saying, I believe that it should come back to the council once all the permitting is done and so forth, and-
Yeah, I have no problem standing in front of the council again, but what I, like I said, what you said earlier on there, just issue, I mean, just grant it, but not issue it, and then you can issue the license once everything is the way you guys want it, or the way, you know, the plans that you have up there are in stone right now. That's, that's, especially the mechanicals that you're looking at.
They're in stone until the planning board decides.
Right. The only thing the planning board, they don't have anything to do with the mechanicals of the building.
Right. It's just a facade.
It's just where it sits, and are they happy now that they got a green roof and gutters and everything that they wanted? And I gave them everything that they wanted.
And so after that meeting Tuesday, and the planning board gives you the thumbs up hypothetically, you go, you go take a building permit and start your mechanical permits and electrical permits and, no?
Well, the mechanical, right, the mechanical permit for the range is different from, I mean, it's going to be a big, a process, but the mechanical range has nothing to do with the town.
I meant mechanicals, as in heating and ventilation and, yeah.
Correct.
All the inspections, electrical plumbing, heating, all those things.
Correct. See, the issue is, once, once I pour them 12-foot walls in there, then the building goes around that. That's why I just say, you meet everything, and I'll be good, and I'll meet everything. And then I'll stand in front of you again, and you guys can come inspect and send the chief down.
Anything else from the council?
Mr. President, I just have one final question. Kind of a, just a question that's kind of perplexed me from the beginning of all of this, Mr. LeBeau, is why this location?
Why? Because it met all the criteria. It met everything I needed. And anything south of there doesn't meet it.
But why a heavily densely populated residential area?
It's a commercial area. I bought-
I, I understand it's a commercial area. There are other commercial areas in town.
Not that meet the criteria. The gas line stops right there. There's 1.5 million BTU gas heater in that range, and natural, pipe natural gas. You can't run off bottled gas or electric. So it met the criteria of the whole project.
But did you look at the surrounding neighborhoods? Did you look at the bus stops? Did you look at the backyards and back of the building?
This, I did. I know the range that's going in here is totally safe. I put it in my, I would have put it in North Tiverton, at my other shop, if it would have fit there, but it won't.
But you must understand the concern of the people around.
I do, absolutely, I do. But it's, it's, I, you know, if somebody has a real concern about it, they can come to the shop and see, no, I offered it all. Come, come look. I'll show them the design, I'll show them the plans. The people putting the range in offered to fly down here again, they've been here twice to sit in front of the council, but I didn't think I needed them, as, you know.
The neighborhood needs to understand that this, this is a commercial property, and and Mr. LeBeau can put this here according to the zoning. And that's why we have the licensing in place, and hopefully everything will go well, but we cannot stop this building from going there.
Anyone else from the council? Okay, I just, I just have just a couple more thoughts or questions. One of the things that says to me, should you get all your permits and something, and if something comes up and you come before the council and they decide not to issue the license, I hope you realize you are taking that risk.
Um, why would, what would stop me?
Again, I'm just, I'm just saying.
No, but I just, I just need to know upfront, and you, I mean, you asked that question, so you gotta give me something upfront that says why, what would I have to do wrong not to get the license?
I don't know, I'm not a building person.
Oh, no, no, I was just saying for the, for the range itself, for the, for what I'm putting in there, what, what would be the reason that the council could say, no, you can't?
If it didn't pass inspection?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, I agree to that.
Again, so I'm just saying, I mean, there are things that could...
Yep, absolutely, I agree to that 100%, if it doesn't pass an inspection...
I'm just letting you know that, that there could be a possibility that the license is not issued.
Yep, absolutely, yep, I agree, I agree, it could be, but it won't, but it could be, because I'm going to do everything that's in there, in your ordinance, everything that's in there will be followed, 100% or better. There's no, that's not an issue, I thought you were referring to maybe something else.
Oh, no, no, I have to...
Okay, yep, yep, yeah, I, that's why I just wanted to be clear.
It's a big undertaking you're taking.
Yep.
And you should know the liabilities.
Yep.
There, there are no guarantees.
Right, but I understand the liability of what's going in there, in the ordinance, and it'll be by the ordinance 100% or better. If it stops because I did something wrong, that's my fault, and I can live with that.
Mr. President, I just want to clarify that issue, if this can open up any discussion. I raised this issue of completing permitting and the approval process, but I, at least, I wasn't trying to suggest however that we not issue the permit before you begin in construction. If, if I had my way, I'd be telling you, don't do anything until you have the license issued. So I, I wasn't trying to suggest with my questions before or comments that I wanted Mr. LeBeau to put up a complete facility, I, I don't think we should ask anybody to, to gamble on what this or a subsequent town council might do. But all I'm asking, my only question went to the permitting process and the approval by the planning board, that's what I would have been happy with.
And that should be on Tuesday, but, I mean, it's, it's going to be hard for, I mean, on Tuesday, hopefully if all goes well, I'll have permit by Friday. But, I mean, the inspections along the way, you're not going to be able to do a final inspection until the last screw is turned on that indoor range, you know, until the mechanical range is put in. And at that point, I, I am 100% confident that there'll be nothing wrong where it won't pass any inspection that you guys are looking for. Action Target guarantees it, and if you read through their policy, they're 100% guarantee of their place, that trap could never lose a bullet.
All right, Mr. LeBeau, you're meeting with the planning board on the 30th?
On the 7th.
7th of October?
A week from tomorrow.
Okay.
We meet on the 14th?
I just have a, just an administrative question. There were 63 neighbors that were notified of this public hearing on this license, do we know that each person received the notification?
Do we know, they were sent certified mail, I would assume.
She can't hear things.
Each, each one of the butters was notified?
It wasn't required to go certified mail, so it just went regular mail, I, I assume they got it, we didn't get them back.
Okay.
At least 14 days ago.
And this was advertised in the newspaper, Syconic Times?
Yes, it was advertised, it's been on the website, and of course for the meeting, all the documentation that we had on Friday was on the website, the prior license, the police report wasn't on, we didn't have it in time.
Do we have any residents of the neighborhood here tonight? And do you have any comments?
I'm going to open up the public hearing. Public hearing is not open?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, and again, I, I will go against Roberts' rules and allow someone if they have had a chance, because I did ask three times for people who had anything to say, so if you'd like to speak now is your last and final time.
My name is Nathan Titcomb, I live at 12 Paul Terrace, Mr. LeBeau, it's nice to meet you, this is the first time I've ever addressed you, that's perfect. Just, I don't want to repeat anything, obviously I'm not in favor of putting this here, and I do understand that it is a commercially zoned lot, but I just have one question for Mr. LeBeau, is that we were talking about the blue card issued by the DEM, can somebody walk into your shop currently and get that for free now?
Get the blue card?
Yes. Okay, I was just trying to clarify what I read on your website this morning, and when, how long is the approximate time for the test to come back? Okay. As I said, some of my concerns have been addressed certainly about the operating hours, I'm quite pleased to see that it would not be there during the school bus times, however, I still object this, I do think that there are probably better places in this town for this to go, but understand that the law is the law and that's how it goes, just glad my opinion can be heard, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Avangeline Gendron, and I live at 14 Springer Avenue in Tiverton. I'm not going to repeat the same things that I've asked before, what I have comments is on, some of the questions this young man asked him, I'm very concerned too with those, what he said. Also, Mr. LeBeau said that he had talked to a lot of the neighbors, well, due to the fact that I am the closest about it to him, he hasn't talked to me about nothing, so how can he say that he has talked to all the neighbors? And somebody's not going to go to his shop, I'm certainly not, go to his shop and ask for his opinion, he should go to everybody that's around there. We don't need the license, he does. So he's not being fair, I think he's giving us a bunch of bullshit. Thank you.
Excuse me, please, please say who you are and speak into the mic.
Dawn Bouchard, 487 Fish Road, Avangeline's daughter. The Rod and Gun Club said that their members are background checked, are your members, so to speak, or whatever customer is going to be background checked, or anybody can walk in and use your facility, I don't understand what a blue card is.
Yeah, no, not anybody can walk in, everybody's... Mr. LeBeau, Mr. LeBeau, please get up to the mic.
Everybody who comes into the shop has to be, it is a, it's, it's safety that goes on through the shop is, it's, it's just unsurpassed, nobody, you know, it's not, it's not an ordinary range where you can just walk in with a card and, you know, our members obviously, they're all not going to get background checks, but they're all going to be, they're all going to have a blue card, a permit to carry, and they're going to have to apply by, you know, if the town required, say, hey, everybody has to have, any member has to have a background check, I'll give them a background check. But everybody who buys a weapon has to have a background check, a federal background check, they have to be psych, psychological now, all that testing is done, so basically in order for them to even own a pistol, the, the background checks are, it's already in place. The Tiverton Police Department does 60 a month, so anybody who buys a gun has to have a background check, and in Tiverton, if you go to a speeding ticket, you're not getting the gun. So, okay, so everything's...
Thank you.
So Mr. LeBeau, anyone who purchases a firearm has to have a background check if they do it legally?
Correct, correct, anybody, and, and a federal.
Do you all agree, yes, okay?
Yeah, it's a, it's a federal background check and a town background check, whatever town you live in also has to do a background check, because you can pass the federal check and just run home and shot your husband coming by a gun, who's going to know, and let the local police, so...
So they'll have a blue card, a gun, which means they've already had a background check?
No, a blue card, you don't have to have a...
No, no, but they'll have a firearm on...
Right, they'll have, in order to buy your first handgun, you have to have the blue card.
Okay.
Okay?
So can I just, sorry, I'm trying to put two and two together here, so to purchase the firearm, you need to have the background check?
Correct, you need a, you need a local and a federal.
Okay, got that, straight on that. In order to come into your shop and fire at, inside the range, you don't necessarily need to have a background check because you may not have purchased a firearm, you might not own your own firearm.
Correct.
You could rent one from your establishment, and if so, before you could fire in the range, you need to go, you need to obtain the blue card, which is linked to this 50-question test that is, I guess adjudicated by the DEM or some entity.
Right, it's the DEM, yep.
Sure, and takes about a week to turn around.
Correct.
And then go through your own, what I would call proprietary sort of...
Safety.
Safety check.
Correct.
Okay.
And just, just for the record, I wouldn't want anybody getting hurt in my shop or anything, you know what I mean, it's, it's not, you know, somebody just can't walk in, rent the gun and go shoot, you know, they have to have, all that stuff has to be in order.
And can you just, again, I don't know, the, the blue card test, what's, what's sort of the, some of the questions in there, what's that?
It, basically it's a, it's a safety, it's a 50-question safety test.
Mm-hmm.
On operation of a gun, how to, what to do, what not to do, you know, few laws are in it, you know, in case there's a misfire, who gets contacted, basically, it's what it is. Again, I have the sheet, I'm not really supposed to bring them outside the building, but if you want to come in and take that test, you'll see the...
My, my concern is that in the absence of a bona fide background check, where that kind of psychological component is a factor of that background check, I guess I have a general concern of someone who might not be of the caliber to pass the background check, passing the blue card test and your safety test, getting access to a firearm in a rental sort of situation, and having a less than fortunate outcome.
Well, you really, it's, you make it sound like it's really easy, it's really not that easy to, to go through the process that you're saying, for a gun rental, they're going to have to go one-on-one with a range officer, somebody can't come in and rent the gun, you whoo, go in the back and pow, 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 start shooting away, it doesn't work like that. It works like there'd be an RSO with this person. 99% of the people shooting at most ranges have purchased their own weapons, probably 99.9, so they've all had background checks, state and local. Be a rare occasion that somebody comes in, you know, and I don't really need the money, so I don't, and my guys know that, it's all about safety.
And so just, just so you understand where I'm coming from with my, with my questioning, and I don't know the business model of this particular institution, and I'm not insinuating that your establishment is apples to apples with this, but nearby in North Attleboro, over the past two years, there have been two suicides inside the range.
Yep.
By people who I'm going to go on a limb, did not go through any sort of background check, walked in, rented a gun, and had an unfortunate end.
I don't believe they rented a gun, because they, again, they're on a pass card system over there, there's no RSOs, so...
So maybe they didn't rent the weapon, but they, they somehow got in...
Well, what's the difference if they do that or if they go jump off a bridge, you know, it's just like you wouldn't, you driving home tonight, you don't want to run some little kid over and kill somebody, I don't want nobody killed in my range the same way as you don't want to hurt anybody or anybody up there wants to hurt anybody.
True.
It's not about getting anybody hurt, it's about safety. Our ranges, we're going to have more classes to teach safety, people buy guns, a lot of guns, and they need, they need safe place to shoot, no more backyard squirting rounds off in the backyard, try this, try that, they'll have a safe place, they're going to have education, I have three of the top instructors in Rhode Island, I'm going to teach at my class, a mass, an ex-mass, Rhode Island State Trooper, Rhode Island Department of Corrections, Firearms Instructor, and my two, so it's going to be, you know, it's going to be beneficial.
Okay.
I just have one, one sort of follow-up to that, and it sort of has to do with the outside of the building, and it just sort of occurred to me that in the event that you had someone who was not familiar with proper firearm protocol and your safety policies and procedures, what is the, is there any outdoor monitoring, I mean, you're saying you got to drive into the parking lot, you got to keep it in a case, it's, it's very, but what, how do you, how do you plan for the person who just doesn't, and walks right up and parks on Main Road and walks across the street with a case, I mean, and you...
I can't think for these people, the people that do that, I mean, 99% of gun owners don't do stuff like that, I mean, that's just, that's comparing something that could happen, same, a barroom, this guy walks into a barroom, has, you know, he had one too many, and he gets in his car and drives, you got more likely of that, 100 million to one, chances of that happening, and somebody walking in with an unsafe weapon, because it's just not allowed, and if it does happen in my shop, it'd be the first and last time they come in, and they know that, even my customers now, they know, no weapons.
Have you made any provisions for any sort of outdoor surveillance or...
Yes, the camera system, every lane in there has a camera facing, facing in, and there's going to be a camera for coming into the parking lot, into the building, it's surveillance all over the place, I think there's 16 camera system that goes into with that.
Good, okay.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to make a suggestion. Yes, yes, Eva.
Good evening, my name is Rosemary Eva, I am a member of the planning board, but I'm speaking for myself, it has been said that Mr. LeBeau met with the planning board, Tuesday night will be the formal meeting with the planning board, I think he, you've met probably with the technical, ad hoc technical review board. I mean, I'm just one member of the board, and we did receive a revised report today that was emailed to us, but I have not had a chance to read it from our consulting engineer, so, and I haven't seen the agenda yet, so it will be the first viewing for the entire board next Tuesday night, I presume.
Thank you.
Minister Eva, the, you sort of turned your head when you...
I couldn't see.
Technical review committee, that is the ad hoc subcommittee of the planning board and also other town officials.
That is correct, Mr. Pelletier, normally, I, I had hoped Kate was here tonight to explain it in detail, but normally it's the administrative officer, one or two members of the planning board if they're available, and the department heads, the fire, police, wastewater, the DPW director, most likely the DPW director will be at next, next Tuesday's meeting, but the other department heads normally will meet at that time.
I believe the building inspector was at your meeting, because I was at his, one of his technical meetings.
Okay, good.
And I believe the building inspector was also there.
Oh, I, I don't doubt you, but I just wanted to make sure that, you know, it's a nine-member board, you know, and just make sure...
They maybe changed everything.
I'm sure they did. Thanks.
Thank you.
That's the way it works, Randy.
It's to prevent, it's to prevent you having to present and continue hearings at the, at the planning board level, so it was to try and take some of the load off of the planning board by getting the preliminary technical stuff taken care of during business hours, and then the, the formal review comes to the planning board, it'll be on Tuesday presumably.
This is the first I've heard of it, I thought I was at planning meetings.
No.
But why'd I change everything for them?
They have to...
Because they're the tech, they're the tech, technical experts, they're the engineers, they know the fire codes, they know the, the building codes, and it's to try and get your plan to the planning board in the best, you know, so you're not going to the planning board and the planning board says, well, this is not going to meet fire code, or this is not going to meet, you know, you're going to have to go back to the drawing board.
Let's pray it doesn't happen.
I don't know.
I'm going to suggest if the, if the council's amenable, that we, oh, I'm sorry.
I just have one thing, and it's not testimony, it's just... I saw that Chief Blakely came up and commented on the Rod and Gun Club licensing request, and I wondered if he had any thoughts on this request, given its high-density area, that's all, I just thought to even, to have sort of an even representation of the chief on these two issues, because I've never heard from him speak on it.
Unfortunately, the chief had nothing to inspect, so we can't call on him to...
Okay, but he has no opinion apparently about... But he has no opinion, apparently, about the location?
That's not anything.
I guess that, okay, thank you.
Yeah, if, if the council's amenable, if Mr. LeBeau is meeting on the 7th, our next scheduled meeting is the 14th. I would like to continue this hearing until the 14th, pending whatever outcome is of that, and then go from there.
Mr. President, if you're looking for a motion, I'll, I'll move that we continue this matter until the hearing of October 14th for the license application.
Seconded. Any discussion?
At a location.
At a location to be determined. Most likely, no, it is town hall.
Town hall. So my only question is, do we have assurance that the planning board is indeed addressing this matter on the 7th?
It's definitely on the 7th, it's on the agenda for the 7th. Everything's been put in, in place, everybody's meeting at 7 o'clock at the town hall. But she's here.
It's a Tuesday, Mike, because of Columbus Day. I saw you.
And at the, at the very least, if the planning board hasn't rendered a decision or recommendation, we'll at least have, we'll have that information, and we'll have an update, and then we can go from there, I suppose.
So we have a motion made by Mr. Lambert, seconded by Mr. Medeas, to continue this hearing on, only on the Secconnet River outfitters portion, request approval of an indoor shooting range, pending their meeting with the planning board on our next meeting of October 14th at 7:00 PM.
At the town hall.
At the town hall. All those in favor? Roll call, please, starting with Mr. Gerlach.
Aye.
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 Vote is six to one. Seeing no further business before the council, I will entertain a motion. Oh, yes.
Could I ask that you add a item to the agenda? It's for distribution. I sent it out. It is a charter complaint that I had received, and I'd like to put that before the council on the July 14th meeting as well.
On the October 14th.
I mean, on the Octo, I'm in July.
I will entertain a motion to add to our agenda a charter complaint received this evening.
Some of, I don't have that, so do you have an extra copy?
There you go. Did someone second it? I can't see.
No, nobody seconded any of that.
No, we haven't a second yet.
Anybody?
Second.
We have a second. Discussion? If I, if ma, if I may ask, Madam Clerk.
Can we have a vote before you talk about it, please?
What vote?
Vote to add it to the agenda. You're voting to add it to the agenda, so you can distribute it, and then you can ask some questions.
All in favor? It is unanimous?
I'm just distributing this for you tonight. I, I thought I had emailed it to you as well. So it is a charter complaint against the municipal court judge for hearing the complaint against the council. So I thought we would try to put this on the October 14th. They can sit at the charter review right.
Yes.
So I would request that you put it on the October 14th, because that's the next meeting, and we're running out of time. I received it on the 24th.
Andy, I just have a quick question. If this complaint was that Judge Donley was appointed to listen to the first charter violation against the town council, and the complaint was that Judge Donley was appointed by the town council, because, and the, and the complaint is he shouldn't have heard the complaint. So now we're going to hear the complaint against Judge Donley.